We're good to go. Microphones on, please. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 28th, 2015, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present except for Selectman Rooney, who will join us via phone for remote participation later in the evening. Our first order of agenda is 6:30, a Class II license hearing requested by P&amp;H Management Corp., 264 Cordville Road. Welcome. Anything before we?
No, I think that at this point, just to let the applicant explain what they're looking to do, and then the board can take it from there.
Welcome. Please identify yourself. If you want, you can grab the microphone and sit and speak, or you can talk.
I'll stand. It's a little easier on this. Good evening. My name is John McAuliffe, and I represent P&amp;H Management, and in the past actually represented its tenant, Louis Aswood. P&amp;H Management's owned by Lou Aswood's dad, Herbert Aswood. We submitted an application, P&amp;H Management, rather, submitted an application, I believe the town has a, or the members may have a copy or had a chance to review it, for a Class II dealer's license under the Massachusetts statute. This site had, is, you may be aware, is a pre-existing non-conforming use down the Cordville section of Southborough, and it has been a gas automotive repair station for a long time, probably since the 40s. I'm not quite sure when, but the Aswoods had bought the property, or the business, in the mid-'80s, I believe. P&amp;H Management bought the land in the '90s.
No longer a gasoline station?
No longer. Then that's, the gas tanks were removed after there was, I wasn't, you know, present, but there were some issues with the fire department in the town, and then ultimately I became involved again, and worked with town council, and had the tanks removed. And the site had a dealer's license up until some point in the 1990s, and that expired. Without the gas, they thought they'd bring that back, they'd do the repair. This is a site that really does serve the community, that surrounding community, offering repairs at a, at a good competitive cost, a lot lower than probably a lot of the franchised car dealers that you'd see on Route 9, or the bigger sales, auto sales. And so, we, I've spoken to town council, there was some resolution regarding an issue about getting the proper dealer's license, and so we made the application to the town, seeking, seeking that license. We have a plan that was submitted along with the application. I, I'm not sure if everybody's reviewed it, and I, I know if, if there are questions about, about the site, how the site would work, the number of cars.
Is this the plan? This was in our folder? Do you want to just, okay, because I don't, has anyone looked in the folder to see it? So, I'm gonna pass that down.
I have a second one, I think my client has one.
Okay. Thank you. This is South.
So, this would be, the site is delineated in thick black.
Can I see it from your house?
I'm good with this. One of the important issues, when I was talking to the, the building inspector and town council, was if you, if you look at the narrow part of this, I'm gonna call it a triangle, but I think my son in high school would correct me, because he takes math, there's probably a better name for that shape, but, call it in a triangle, but the smaller part there, because the merger of the road, the Cordville Road and Woodland Road, and the people turning on to that area, Route 85, that we agreed to keep that area clear of vehicles. Once in a while, some do move out of the, the bays, but there's been a real concerted effort to keep, keep from that blind spot, and that's, that's going to continue. You'll see where the automobiles would be on that far side by the fence, right, right along that, the wide side of the, of the lot line. The only, if you don't mind. On Route 85, the, it's kind of an open entrance on, on the top. There is, there is one entrance to come into the backside. You know, this they kind of block, because they don't want anybody cutting through that, so they, they keep a car here to block, because they don't want that people taking a cut, a cut turn. It's, it's unsafe, and, and it's not, it's unsafe for everybody. So, the two bays are in the front of the garage. Over here, there's a small little office. When the cars are either being worked on, or, or for sale, if we get the licenses, not, not at this point, they would be.
That's why they call it a plan.
A plan, right, that's the plan, would be along, along this area. And along, alongside of the building, there's a tire rack, because they do sell some used tires. They had to pick up and clean the site. There's a, there's an overall plan that the, that would go with, with this license. Part of it is, is beautifying the site, hot-topping the pavement area, you know, cleaning out, delineating that. I know Mr. Aswood, who's own the land, Herbert, the father, his other son has a very successful used car dealership, or pre-owned, that they call now, in Lynn, Lynn Way Auto, they have a great website, they sell on the higher end of the vehicles, and, so the families are familiar with the business, and what, he wants to have that same goal at the site here, to be able to offer a, a clean, you know, professional site, upgrade a little bit. It's, it's not gonna be a, a big or heavy use dealership, it's, it's somewhat, the, the focus is, is on the repairs and service. What we found out is that, and Louis, you could correct me, or chime in if you want to add to it, but the, the people who come, the customers who come, often are looking for, for an automobile, you know, under, under $7,000, probably in that 2,500 to 7,500 range. I mean, they can, with the auctions these days, you can pretty much find anything, but it's a, a service where someone has a car that's on its last legs, and they say, how much would it cost to fix? And they thinking about a new car, and they might say, I don't want to put $700 or $800 into an older car, what do you have? And sometimes they might want to keep the older car and fix it, but pay over time, so you're basically working with the community. Without the, the gasoline, that, this is a natural part of the business, and that's why we're asking, you know, to, to work with the town, get some feedback, and see, you know, what would fit, and, and it's something that we could make work.
Have any sales transactions occurred at the site?
No, because we.
None at all?
We entered an order, not, not since an order has been entered, and so, once in a while, prior, we, we entered a stipulated order in, in the Superior Court, that was an agreed to, that would cease all the sales and.
So, no, no vehicles that there have, you know, since then have had for-sale signs on them?
No.
And no sales have been transacted, private parties haven't done any?
To my knowledge, no.
If, if I have a customer comes in, and I know another one, that's between them.
So, the site has been used for maybe private party sales, maybe facilitated by the owner, or?
I would.
Not at my location, not until I have one.
To my understanding, I mean, if he's repairing something, someone, someone comes in and says, I want to get rid of the vehicle, and he says, well, I know someone who buys, here's his number, call him, but he doesn't facilitate to the extent that where he's making a commission, or he's holding himself out as a dealer. I mean, people ask, and it's more of, well, you can call a, you know, Ralph's down the street, and he wants to get rid of his car, and you may know him, I mean, it's a pretty tight community down there, but there's no for-sale signs, or that, that type of thing.
Okay. So, so while you're in, you may be getting it to it, I'm, I'm not sure, but what are you actually asking us, other than to have a used car along? Because you must have some idea in mind of what you're looking to do with the operation, two cars, nine cars, 150 cars? The special permit mentions two vehicles.
The, the.
The request?
Or you mean that, what the previous permit?
You know, what, what your, the, the previous permit, which expired in 95.
Right.
Said that no more than two cars on the lot can be for sale, so.
I, at, at this point, we show that there's ability to do approximately 10 spaces.
Okay.
Need some of those spaces for cars that are in repair, and going in and out of the garage, because you can't keep them on that side. I, I believe the number you're looking for is a maximum, seven?
Yeah.
A maximum seven. It, it seems the car business has changed a little bit. You can drive down a lot of, any streets, and you see a for-sale sign at the end of a driveway, and people are selling cars, and I've found out through some, and other dealers I represented in NADAC, that there's some folks who are, who are selling four to five cars a month that way, you know, unlicensed. Mr. Aswood and P&amp;H Management would like to, you know, be licensed, fall within the, you know, statutory requirements, have the bond with the town. Prior to this, there had been no, my understanding was, that no for-sale signs that were out there, like in advertising, in banners, and that kind of thing, it, it wasn't something that fit with the neighborhood. I guess that decision is really with this board, if they want to delineate what was for sale and what was not for sale. I would leave that to what the board thought would be best for that location, that site fitting in that neighborhood.
No more than seven cars combined, either for sale or under repair, is that your point?
No, seven, seven for sale. We do, do need that extra three to four spots with the cars that come in for repair.
Well, I count 10.
10.
On the edge there, and I think you said there are two bays.
Two bays.
Well, that's 12, right?
But they wouldn't be for sale, like.
I'm just trying to figure out what the total number is, kind of.
Oh, the total number of cars, I'm sorry. They can park 10, you can have two in the bays, some come in and out for oil changes, and, because you have this area where, you know, there might be, you know, two or four cars depending, sometimes it's, there's one, and other times I've, I've seen four, to be honest, you could drive right by and see it, but a lot of times those are, are day jobs, a lot. My understanding that a chunk of business is, is their service they provide to commuters that, that take the train, that might park the car, they leave their keys, or they make an arrangement on the drop box, they go pick up the vehicle, change the oil, you know, put it out, and then bring it back to the lot, or they drop it off and park, you know, free for the day. I mean, it's all, it's all about service and convenience.
So, tell me about the vehicles that might be on the lot today.
I might defer that question to.
Okay, and you would just need to give them the, the microphone, so.
Right.
The audience and people, because I couldn't really.
Yeah.
I saw some of them, I don't, I don't know. But, you know, I mean, not necessarily today, you know, last week.
Typically.
Recent.
Yeah.
This is the review of the vehicle.
We have, I do work for Wholesale Fuel, I repair his small trucks. I do work for Vanessite Towing, repair some of his small vehicles. He is a used car dealer, who I repair. We've been friends for years, and he'll bring me two or three at a time, and we'll get them done as timely as possible. And some, we find out that just need too much work to bring back, you know, and he donates those to project just because in Hobbiton.
Okay.
And we have our own flatbed for local use only, and, you know, my, our, our company pickup truck to get rid of, take, pick up tires and parts, and, in a four-wheel-drive vehicle for the snow, and our own personal cars that we come and go to work with.
So, so, right now, why would, why would a car be on your site, or a vehicle be on your site?
All the cars on the site now are for repair work.
Okay.
There's some that are done, and, you know, waiting to get picked up, and there's some that are, you know, in process.
Okay.
And there's some that haven't even been started yet.
So, I think we, you've been in business a long time, and, and I think people would like to see you have a successful business, but, but there are some concerns. For example, today, there's approximately 14 vehicles on the lot that aren't registered. So, that's a concern to me, just operating a repair shop, I would expect vehicles would be registered, perhaps someone who's a used dealer has brought one into you, and, and you're making repairs to that, or whatever else. But, but 14 unregistered seems kind of excessive for, for what you're doing in business now, plus a jet ski. So, I, I think, you know, some of the things that, that I personally would like to see is a good plan to show what's going to happen, there's gonna be, you know, we're requesting something for, so, to be able to sell so many used vehicles, which of course, at that time will not be registered, and we are gonna need X spaces for people coming and going, waiting for repairs, and then this area isn't going to have parking, or only an occasional parking lot, because as I see 10 spaces, there's a lot of area in between. Where, where currently, there's kind of a mishmash of, of vehicles and other things. If there's a, if there's a tow truck, where, where is that gonna go? Because I, I thought I looked at, I don't want to really get into it, but I thought I had looked at way back, that no tow truck was allowed there, but I don't want to talk about that now, because that's, that's gonna be, you know, something that we're gonna look at. So, the, the biggest thing is, there's an adequate plan that shows 10 spaces, but when I look at the lot today, when I look at it last week, when I look at it through this nice thing called Google Earth Street View from September, there's about 20-plus cars, three boats, a tow truck. It's, it's, it's not what I want to see now, and it's not what I want to see if we approve a, a used license.
Those vehicles you're talking about have long gone.
Okay.
There isn't any boat on the lot right now.
Okay, there, there's.
May I speak a little minute?
Sure.
I don't need this.
No, no, you need, you need to speak for the.
People watching on TV need it.
I'm Herb Aswood.
Yeah.
I'm P, part of P&amp;H Management, my youngest son is part of it also.
Sure.
Now, I've been in the architectural engineering business for about 55, 60 years. I've worked with IMPE, Cabusier, you name it, and I've done on many high-rise buildings, worked on them in Boston, and in Wellesley College, the Jewish Art Museum, and so forth, but I do architectural work as, as well as structural. So, I know what you're talking about, and when I worked for Uncle Sam, I was an inspector for Corps Headquarters, and we made sure everything was clean and proper. If you've been in the service, you know. When you saw Corps Headquarters men come by, you snapped two.
That's, that's.
So.
The two in the middle that have been in the service are still out there.
I was Army, what branch were you in?
Army.
What, anyways, I was in the 15th Corps. Anyways, so get on, so what I'm, what I'm getting to is, when it comes to design and having things look spick and span, that's my cup of tea.
Hmm.
Okay? Been in the engineering business for years, and worked for Uncle Sam, and my boys are doing well to doing other businesses. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, so, but.
Have any questions?
Basically, to the vehicles that are on the lot now, is, 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 I'm advised by the building inspector that there, there were 14 vehicles today that, that aren't registered, a jet ski, and then six vehicles elsewhere on the site that were registered, either in the bay or, or elsewhere, so i- is that going to be, you know, that's, that's kind of maybe excessive?
It is, it's, we, I don't think I've ever had a deathfall, we had some cars that were buried in the snow, and basically, we got a lot of stuff that's ready to go, I'm gonna try to, I was actually trying to get a push to move it out over the weekend, you know, just to get these things back where they belong.
Okay. So.
I guess, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure, go, go ahead.
Showing this was where, you know, the cars on these tent spots would be really dedicated to what's for sale.
Okay.
I suppose seven, because you do have the people coming in and out, it does work for the other dealers. This is a somewhat of a pretty fluid area, I mean, and I know the flatbed truck, I think I might have.
It's next to the building.
Is always usually next to the building, unless it's on the road.
Okay.
So, it's kind of, there's a rack of tires that are changed in, new, mostly all new tires, he does reps for a wholesaler, and then that's there, and the, so there's, there's room for some space, they try to keep one area wide open, I mean, sometimes people can, they park their car, they run in, want to pay or pick up or whatever, and then, and then, you know, but this would be that dedicated side, you're right, this is open, we keep the cars away from here, I don't even think there's one against that, and the bay, the bay holds up to what it was. See, of the front, there's an island here, it's not shown, because it's not real gas anymore.
Right.
Sometimes a car pulls in there, but they try to avoid a automobile that close to 85 parked, because it's on the other side. If, if the board wants, you know, a more detailed inflow, outflow identification of, of, like, work in progress and repair, as opposed to. I apologize. And if the question of the concern was a more detailed plan that showed and delineated used cars or vehicles for sale, the, you know, repair, and then the, the kind of the daily in, inflow in and out, and had that identified, so there's some kind of form that could be followed, one of the overall goals is, is to hot-top the whole site, and add the lines, except for back by the fence and the trees, don't really want to make everything, you know, pavement there, but what was there, that would be a nice improvement, then you could mark the sites.
Questions, Mrs. Fannin?
I need a more detailed plan. First, I believe one of the statements was that you planned on hot-topping the site, which you just said for the second time, and beautifying the area. How do you plan to achieve the second part, beautifying that area?
Okay.
Because, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I would think you'd have to identify the road cuts in order to do that, you'd have to prevent parking in other areas of this site in order to do that, if you're gonna plant any kind of vegetation or anything. The town of Southborough has gone to great efforts to build a park down there, which you can see from your site. The, the neighborhood is changing, their expectations are high, and so I guess I would like to know, how are you gonna beautify that site? To screen yourself from, forget the about it, well, don't forget the about it, because you said you're gonna leave the trees, and there's fencing there the last time I saw it, anyway.
Yes.
But across the street, on Woodland Road and Cordville Road, I mean, how are you gonna screen the property to beautify that area?
It's, it's, let me hold that there. The, the area that, that's the most visible, and that, that would show most from the improvement is that, is the corner where the roads meet, down, down here.
Which you're limited because of the MBTA.
MBTA, but it's, there's an area, there's an area right in there that has like a defined rock.
Right.
That's right there, usually mulch, all that area. The rest, there's some trees here that could be, you know, cut back just a little bit on the backside.
Hmm.
There's, besides hanging plants, which they've done, and planters on the island, I mean, you have cars coming in and out, this area would be, would be mulched on that side after the hot-top, but a lot of this is, it would be tough to put vegetation on there because of roadway, create a screen, it's really on the backside.
Access to the garages at the front of Cordville Road, correct?
Yes.
Two bays.
Two bays, yes.
Within this footprint, or is there another piece off to the side?
No.
Is this the building?
Yes.
As it sits today?
Yes, yes, pretty much a square.
If you enter through the bays here, I see no reason that they're, you're not gonna be doing any parking over here, because you said most of the traffic would be coming through this flat area here, and along this side of the.
My, my understanding is that.
Because there's no gas in it.
They keep, they keep a, a car here to block, so people can't cut through. If there's a lineup of cars, and they don't want to wait, sometimes they, they pull a fast turn, and that just creates traffic problems and cut through.
But curbing would stop that, and trees.
Um.
Here. I'm just.
I'm just concerned about visibility and the traffic.
Well, I'd be more concerned about vegetation here, where line of sight coming out of Woodland Road to Cordville, where that was the MBTA road design there, and I was on the committee when this was all going through.
It's, it's low vegetation and planting and mulch, it's not, not trees that are up high. We can address that, because the, the overall goal is, is to improve the site.
I'd like to see the improvements on paper, so that the board knows what, well, I know what I'm approving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak to a young lady?
Thank you.
Every year, my son Lou has a, a florist come down, and they put all kinds of nice flower, floral here, flowers in, in the hard barrel containers.
Yeah, perfect, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Anyways, all kinds of flowers over here, every year they planted. With the storm that we had here, nothing's gonna stay. And on the island, there's also vegetation, flowers, and so forth. This is, this was taken by the MBTA here, makes a nice wraparound, but.
But you can park a few cars here and a few, the ramp truck is parked over here, with a few cars here. In, in front of the office, people pull in and pull out, you know, and that's, you know, it's a small operation. It's no big deal. I think you're making a big to-do out of this than what it is, really. Can I answer anything else for you?
I'm not trying to make a big to-do out of anything. It's the same questions we'd ask of anyone that brings in a plan, and I'm trying to be respectful. But on the other hand, we've heard the traffic pattern that exists today, what it might be after today, if you get the license. And I think we need, I need a plan that shows the parking spaces and the area where the vehicles will be parked along the side of the building.
That's no problem. That's an easy one.
Right, I mean, you yourself said it was an easy one to do, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Sminenoni?
I would just reiterate that a little more thought and detail as to, you know, the number of vehicles, the number for sale, how we're going to designate spots. I don't believe the layout of Corderville and Woodland coming together here is actually accurate as it is on the ground today versus what's on this, you know. Oh, I don't see a date on this plan, but understanding that, you know, you've got designated spaces along this edge, but you've got a ton of space in here that could become a complete mishmash again, unless we have a better idea of what the intention is, right? Maybe, maybe the. Yeah, is there, is there a reason why the island stays now that there's no gas anymore? Can we just get rid of that island? As we, as we think about hot-topping, et cetera, just, you don't have to answer, it's just, you know, train of thought here.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
The island is a safety feature for the office. How many times have you seen cars go astray and get off course? Not too long ago, I was, I had an ultimate town car, Lincoln Town Car, and I was going into a restaurant, and about eighteen inches of my car was sticking out from the entrance going in, and this girl texting slammed into my, the back of my car, and she spun me around. I had a big Lincoln Ultimate, okay, and it's a safety feature.
Yeah, fair enough.
It keeps somebody, the, the, the steel pipes are there with the island there. It'll stop any car from hitting the building.
Okay.
And that's why it's there.
Mm-hmm. Well, it, it certainly can serve that purpose, I would agree. I think it was originally there for gas pumps, but I understand your point. My point is, is just, you know, if a license is going to issue, frankly, it's only going to be for one year. And so I, I think you want to put your best foot forward on something like this, to have the best chance for that to renew when that year is up. So that's my, those are my thoughts in a vacuum.
Thank you for that, because that's a good point that I, I have discussed with the applicant, that, look, we're, the, the year's a quarter of the way through or more, a third. And if, if you say you're going to do something, you're going to do it because you'll be back. And, you know, that's, so they know, and, and.
Yeah, I just think with that in mind, then, having a little bit more thorough thought and preparation here is in order. I mean, just for, I, I don't necessarily think it's a deciding factor here, but for example, the, the agreed order that you're under right now required this application to be made by February twenty-fifth. So here we are, almost two months late, right? Not saying that's a big deal necessarily, but why is that? I don't, I don't, it's a rhetorical question, but it makes me wonder about what's happening here, so.
There've been some challenges over the years. I mean, there've been some plans prior to, you know, you being on the board, you may have heard about some of the challenges. Yeah, so there've been months and months and months. The fire chief is here, he knows.
Yeah.
Months and months and months have gone by where plans were put in place, but, you know, unfortunately, for likely a variety of reasons, they just never materialized. They didn't move forward at the pace that was represented, was represented to this board and to the, to our fire chief, so.
Right, yeah, I want to be able to support.
History there.
I want to be able to support something that makes sense. I, I just, I think you guys have got to meet us a little further along, so.
Thank you.
The, the business maintains an active, like many businesses do, an active website as well?
Yes, retail work, and then it connects to my brother's car.
Is that the Linway Auto Sales?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the, the site, the site right now, so if, if a customer went onto your site, it would, right at the top, it says, currently I represent the sales of some quality pre-owned vehicles. What does that mean?
Use that family business, basically.
So you, so someone looking at this, I mean, would presume that you are selling pre-owned vehicles, and then there's pictures of them on the lot. Some of them look like they're on your lot, but you said you're not selling vehicles.
Right, that website was designed by a schoolteacher in town, and, no, we're not selling any cars at that location. Everything goes through my brother's place in Linway.
All right, so.
Many people in Southborough go, you know, we may show them the website, and then print something out and then send them to, go look at. He's got a hundred and twenty-five cars in one block.
All right, so, so just know that to the, someone who doesn't know that narrative that you're expressing and were to look at this site, it would, it clearly represents, I would say, that you're selling pre-owned vehicles on your lot. And it says, we buy cars for cash, so I assume that we is the owner of this property, which would be you. Currently, I, meaning you, represent the sale of some quality pre-owned vehicles, so, you know, and I, I, I understood that you were not doing that, but there's a public representation that you are.
Excuse me, when you say I.
You need, you, you just need to have the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Just to make, clarify a little thing. When you say I, when he says I, it's he or his brother, you know. He'll, he'll talk to a person, say, go see my brother. He's out in the Linway, two eighty-five, two ninety-five Linway.
Okay, my only commentary is that when you look at the site, it doesn't say that. So someone looking at it would think that he is, there's only one I in here. It doesn't say what you're saying. So that is, that would strongly suggest that's something that you may want to readily update.
All right.
I, I think that website probably hasn't been changed or revised in, I guess, what, when was the last time?
It's been a while.
I mean, it was put up a while ago. I, I don't think it's current or it's maintained, you know, especially since that order. I don't think, best practice may have been to take it down and to remove or edit that, but I don't think anything was added or used. I think that dates back well over a year.
So all these cars that are represented on the site are, are from years ago?
Those cars belong to a collector in Southborough called Ted Bucetti, who just moved to Florida. He's been, you know, in the business, lived up at the golf course, and those are his, his cars. In that picture, probably, I'm going to say.
So those, those vehicles shown on your site are someone else's? They're not actually for sale?
No, he liquidated those cars somewhere else. At the time, my web designer, as a matter of fact, he's an Ashland schoolteacher and he lives in Southborough. And he did that for us as a favor, you know, on his own.
So just.
We'll update it immediately.
Something to look at, because right, it says, check out these vehicles below, and it has them, and it looks like they're for sale, and.
Yeah.
And it looks like you're selling, so, and that was different than what the, has been represented. You may want to check into that site.
Yeah, I'll have that, I'll have that thing updated.
Do you know, those vehicles you've had for a while, I think.
No.
Are they common or not?
No, no, they're all, it's just.
Okay, anything further or?
No, it's just, it's been a lot of challenges, I think, with that site. I mean, I'm sure well-intentioned, but there's been issues for years going on. I mean, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to think that, you know, we should be issuing a, an additional, you know, a, a license for, you know, additional sales. There's been a history there that I, it's been troubling. You know, again, I'm sure all well-intentioned, but the business has been a challenge. And some of the representations I'm, I'm seeing are, you know, are obviously an issue as well for someone who is in the public, who is looking at the, you know, looking at the business.
So before I open it up to any comments by town officials or anyone in the audience, you, we'd, we'd like to see businesses succeed in town, but we approved a license for another entity, which is out on Route Nine. And when they came in and requested something, we expected and we saw, here's where all the vehicles will be parked, here's what we're going to do. There won't be any more than these vehicles on the lot, so that when the building inspector, building commissioner rides by, rides into the lot, he can tell very quickly if they're not following the approved plan. So for you to succeed, you need to get this license approved, and you need to keep this license beyond the end of December, because that's when the license is valid. And if we grant it, we will ride by, we will make sure that there's not too many vehicles there being sold. We will make sure that there's not an overabundance of vehicles that are, you know. If we approve this license, I want to say, okay, these are the vehicles that you're selling. These are the five spots, seven spots that were approved for vehicles here. You have three other vehicles that aren't registered on the lot. What's the deal? Why are they here? You have eight, eight cars parked on the lot, because for you to succeed, you also need to be a good neighbor to the people around you. Or they'll be checking you out, and they'll be calling the building inspector and saying, he's got ten vehicles, whatever else. Because, you know, unfortunately, we have had some issues on the site in, in, in the past, which have caused resident complaints. And that's something that I want to avoid. So I think you give us a basic idea in this plan, but I think it's inadequate. I think we need to see something that says, we're requesting this many vehicles to be sold. These are the spots, and we're going to identify these as spots. These are the improvements we're going to make to the lot. If we're going to pave them, then I would expect to see the lot paved. And if it's paved, then you could identify through striping an area where these vehicles can be stored, so that we can know that. You're going to need parking for your, for your repair business, you know, there's, there's no doubt about that. But, but a nice orderly facility there will help you be successful with your sales, and, and will keep the neighbors from complaining. Now, that's what I'm looking for, one of the things. The other question I have is, we have Custom Automotive as a tenant, which is Mr. Asward, Louis Asward?
Yes.
And, and an application from P and H Management. Who's selling the cars?
The, the dealer would be, used car dealer would be P and H Management. It, it's the owner of the property. It run, you know, the, these usually run with the land, was my understanding, these licenses, and, and.
So, but I, I, I don't expect Mr. Herbert Asward is going to be coming out from Newton to sell cars, and his other son has, is, is, is it Mr. Louis Asward and his employees, whatever, that will be selling the vehicles?
He would, he would be there repairing and selling. He'll be on the site, yes, as an agent of P and, P and H.
Okay.
Because the repair business, they, wants to keep it separate. There's, you know, buying and selling the used cars has to be on a separate accounting than the repair and that kind of.
So how, how soon do you think you can turn this around to come back to us with a definitive plan that shows pretty accurately where we're going to sell used vehicles, where we're going to park vehicles that are in for repair, where our flatbed is going to be located, and where our employee parking is going to be located? Because then.
Sure.
That allows us to say, okay, now you're going to have so many spaces on that lot. I don't think we're going to send the police down if we notice you've got one extra vehicle on the lot. But if we see that you've got ten extra vehicles, then there's going to be complaints from the neighbors, and the building inspector will have to ask on that. And we're back in a situation that's, that's adversarial as opposed to promoting your business and, and trying to do a good thing for, for everyone involved.
I would add traffic flow and landscaping to that list.
Well, all, all on the, you know, what are you going to do to, to improve the site? Because, because if you tell me for one, we're going to pave it, and we approve it, and the license is up for renewal, and we haven't seen any paving, then I'm concerned about what is, what is being stated and what's actually going to be done.
Correct.
And, and so, so, you know, some of these things, i- if this license is approved, it'll have conditions. And personally for myself, we can decide as a board, but I would rather see a for-sale sign in a vehicle that's for sale on that lot to identify, so we know exactly what it is. And that, that would want to be one of the things that I, but I think, you know, I can, I can be okay with this, but I want to see what you're going to do, and, and I don't want to see next year that you didn't do it or, you know, you're, you're doing other things. So is this something that, so we're going to have to continue this? Is this something that you can turn around for our meeting next Tuesday? Or, or do you need a little more time to do, to do beyond that, which would be later in, in, in May? Yeah.
Yeah, well, we need to, I would say, I'm also going to consult.
Yeah, well, no, we're not going to, we're not going to do it now, because that's, you know, and, and, you know, we want to see, this is going to go into the record as, this is the plan, this is what we're going to do. And if there's any complaints, then the building inspector is going to take out that file, and he's going to look at what the conditions are and what you agreed to. And, and there'll be an issue if, if it's something different as, as to what was stipulated when we approved the license.
I also want to just check on, it was mentioned that maybe on the scale, I, I want to check with the civil engineer who, who did some work. I know you did the layout, but Peter Beam has had, had done something. He's got some plans. I don't know. And I, I just want to check and review that with him, and I don't know what his schedule is, that's all.
And I would add, unless I'm mistaken, I believe the site currently is in violation. And, and I would, I wouldn't be entertaining a license application by someone who's currently in violation. So in addition to what we're asking for, I assume we will be, we'll have a clean bill of health in that regard before this would come back.
But, but i- if I, if I can just get a nod from the building inspector, that it's in violation because this needs to be straightened out, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so, so part, part of the violation and, and with the order is that, you know, that there was an agreement to come for this license council? So, so we're not acting inappropriately to consider this before other.
No, you're not. The building commissioner's administrative order has now become a court order. And it is properly before you by agreement and by blessing of the court by an order to consider whether or not to grant a Class II used car license. So procedurally, it's where it belongs.
Okay, so is, is there anything that's, that's not clear about what, and, and I'm going to let, just so you, you, you know, that if there's any town official or resident that wants to say anything before we send you off to, to do this. Is there anything that we've talked about that's, that's not clear at this point, what we're looking for?
Not, I, I understand the clarity. I, I just, one question, when is the, not this Tuesday, when will the next meeting be, just?
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth. I'm the type that likes to have things done and checked before it's just done.
Good idea.
The, the, the best thing, in my opinion, is, is to make sure everything's done and then come back. So if you wait till, till that second meeting, and then you're sure, if you have any questions, you, you could call Mr. Robidoux and, and just see, he knows, he knows where we are on this.
I'd just like to do that. I think, probably could get it done by Tuesday, but I just, sometimes being aggressive like that just doesn't, doesn't work properly.
Well, and you should note, to have it done by Tuesday, you need to have it to us by, by Friday morning, so we can get it on our agenda.
I think the nineteenth is, is better. It's, it's better planned. And I, I want to address the website. I'm going to look at that. I, I think. I think the information on there is stale because once we entered the agreement with council, you know, the purpose was, talking with town council, the building inspector and meetings last, I think they dated back to the fall, about once their gasoline was gone, it's about working towards a different goal, taking a different path, doing something to improve that site. You know, the day-to-day business that you have to attend to, just to make money to keep the operation going is, you know, garage guys, they don't like lawyers at their place a lot, you know? I mean, and, you know, so some of it took a little time, but it's a totally different direction and a different plan that we wanna lay out and put before the town. So we, you know, gonna embrace what you said and move that forward. Hopefully they'll like the improvement. You know, a year from now, if things work out well, it would be a good result.
Counsel, anything?
I think we're all set.
Okay. Mark, fine. Any fire chief, you signed off, you're good on the frozen. Okay, everyone's good? Okay. Is there anyone from the audience that has a question? Ms. Asalbeekin?
Desiree Asalbeekin, 137 Woodland Road. I want to commend the Board of Selectmen for taking a very critical eye on this particular parcel in my neck of the woods down in Corderville. Unfortunately, many of the residents, I've had a couple of residents in my neighbors call me to ask me exactly what a Class II license was because they recognized the 264 Corderville Road as being this parcel. And so unfortunately, some of them are elderly and are not able to come out to the meeting tonight. But I want to wholeheartedly again thank you for taking a critical eye on this particular parcel. This has been an eyesore and a public safety hazard for myself and my neighbors for over 20 years. In addition to the 14 unregistered vehicles that were on the lot today, as of 5:30 this afternoon, there were 17 cars on that lot. Hours of operation, it is my understanding, are supposed to be seven to seven. Oftentimes, when I come home from work well after 8:30, there are still lights on and activity is still happening on that part, on that, in the building where there's repairs, you know, upwards of nine o'clock at night, very disturbing to us. As of a week ago Thursday, the police have been called relative to cars being parked in that small triangle where there's claimed to be no cars parked there. There are cars parked there almost every day. I travel to and from Hopkinton every day to work and I'm met with those safety concerns on a daily basis. So, you know, I just, I understand this is going to be under your consideration and reviewed again in a couple of weeks, but I really urge the Board of Selectmen to continue to have this critical eye on this parcel, not only for myself, but for my other neighbors, many of which are elderly, and also for, as Mrs. Vanov said, just the overall beauty of that part of town. We are Corderville, we've done, we've put in a significant amount of money to do improvements, whether they're beautification and/or passing from, to and from the commuter rail, and I'd like to see forward progression. And, you know, 20 years of same ownership and the same type of problems on this parcel, I don't have personally a very good outlook on things to come if they're granted this license. So I appreciate your time on behalf of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go for the 19th, we decided?
Yes.
Okay. And perhaps you can consider, when you're talking about beautification, whatever, on what I'll call that point, maybe you can put a couple of large planters, concrete planters or something so, and I understand the position of parking a car there so people don't go cutting through and that may be a nice way to solve that problem without having cars parked there. So I'm hopeful we can do something.
So once you submit a plan back to the Selectmen's office and that, we can work, schedule a time for you on the 19th.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. 19th.
It's a Tuesday, yes?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you wanna...
Oh. We had one in the file, that's all that we really... Our next agenda item...
A salute.
Is...
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Next agenda item, presentation on water rates.
Ms. Galligan, tell us about water.
So you had my memo that we hired Abrams Group to look at our water rates, look at our needs financially, capital plan and our budget and our cost of water and everything, analyze what we have out there and come up with a revised set of rates based on the fact that treasurer and, actually, I guess he's treasurer and CFO, had asked, had an issue that we hadn't, we weren't gonna be able to cover the most recent bonding that we were looking at for water improvements with, within the actual budget each year without depleting down our reserves. So I have some handouts for you, but Matt and Mark Abrams are actually gonna speak to this more than me.
Pleasure to be with you. I'll turn this over to Matt to give you a brief overview of our report.
Just gonna wait a second for the handouts to be passed out. So what I'd like to do real briefly is walk you through the process that we used to come up with the handouts that are now in front of you. What we did first was to work with Karen, with the town treasurer and the town accountant on gathering the data to use for our analysis. Once we gathered all the data that we wanted to use in our analysis, we put it together in a large Microsoft Excel workbook. The starting workbook that we used is what we're calling our baseline scenario, and I believe you have the summary page for that baseline scenario in front of you. The reason why we wanted to show this baseline scenario was to present a quote-unquote "do nothing" scenario. If nothing were to change with water rates and/or the tier structure for water rates, what would the next two fiscal years, FY 2016 and FY 2017, what would they look like? What would they project to look like? And our analysis showed us that they're projecting to have over $100,000 in deficits in each of those years. Now, one of the things that we were asked to include in our analysis was new debt that was to be brought on, and Karen just mentioned it a little while ago, for Maine's work on Route nine, I believe, in Southborough. And we worked with the town treasurer to ensure that we had an accurate debt schedule to use in our analysis. And there is a line for new debt service in our analysis here, and that's what that So once we established this baseline scenario, we then sought to look at rates, potentially look at the tier structure, ultimately suggest some changes, potential changes, and see what worked well for Karen. So the first scenario we focused on was keeping the tier structure the same and focusing on increasing water rates. We focused on simply what the water rates would have to, what they would need to be increased by in order to simply cover the deficits that we were projecting for FY 16 and FY 17. Now, you don't have that scenario in front of you, I'm just commenting briefly on it. Another scenario we looked at was to not touch the water rates, but instead focus on tier structure changes. And again, that one's not in front of you either, I'm just commenting briefly on it. And for that scenario, we focused on, we did, prior to that, we did a quick analysis on the current picture of what bills look like. We analyzed all the bills for a recent fiscal year, which is FY 14, and how many bills existed in each tier. So for the tier structure scenario that I'm talking about, we changed the tiers to see what they would look like if there were an equitable amount of bills in each tier. A third scenario that we presented was a combination of the two, changing the tier structure, but also changing the rates, increasing the rates. And that was the one, that was the scenario that Karen liked the best, so we focused on that one the most. And we presented a few different scenarios for that one with different rate increases. But the one that we, the one that we liked the best was one of the ones that you have in front of you. And that one is a scenario that has a 3.25% increase each year and a 6.5% meter rate increase for the first year only. So you should have that scenario in front of you. And before we get, dive a little deeper into that one, I did wanna comment briefly on the tier changes that we're proposing for that scenario. And you have a printout for that as well. So if you could focus quickly on the comparison of bills in each tier file that you should have in front of you. The top section is the current tier structure. It has the breakout of what the bills look like in each tier by percentage. You'll see that tier one is 20, about 22%, tier two has about 34%, tier three about 22%, tier four about 14%, and tier five about 6%. So the structure that we worked on for Karen is presented below that. On the left-hand side, you'll see a new tier structure. Tiers one and two remain the same. Tier three, the upper level of tier three, has gone down from 3,500 to 3,000. Tier four has gone down a bit as well, now it's 3,000 to 6,000, and tier five is anything above 6,000. And by making those changes, the same analysis is presented to the right. It shows what we would project, we project the bills to look like in each tier. Tiers one and two haven't changed. If you combine the two, it's about 50% of the bills end up in tiers one and two. Tier three is down to about 18%. Tier four is down to about 15, up to about 15%. Tier five has increased to about 10% of the bills. And additionally, a quick comment on the average residential user, which we calculate to be about 2,800 cubic feet per bill, that average residential user would remain in tier three as it would in the current scenario, as it is in the current scenario. So Karen was comfortable with this tier structure once we presented it to her, so we chose to use that in our analysis. And then we focused on increasing the water rates. And like I already mentioned, the scenario that we were most fond of was the one that is presented before you, which has a 6.5% meter rate increase in year one, FY 16, and a 3.25% rate increase in each year, FY 16 and FY 17. And that's on page two of this, of that scenario. And at the bottom, we provided some analysis on different, what we're calling, user impact cases. We focus on certain users and analysis on what changes to their bill they could expect, both by dollar amount and by percentage. These are quarterly bills. So to gauge a yearly impact, it'd be multiplied out by four. And one of the main reasons why this scenario was the most popular one was because of the impact, or I should say, lack thereof, on the water reserves. On the summary tab that we have for this scenario, there is a tracker at the bottom that shows the starting point for the water reserves, but also the projected ending point. And there is not much change with this scenario.
So in summary, the suggested scenario in front of you provides a rate increase, some block changes, and provides additional revenue to cover the additional debt service, which was the basic reason we were brought in to look at this, at the starting point.
So no change, did I hear correctly? No change in tiers one and two? But those in tiers...
No change to the consumption in tiers one and two. But the scenario that we're presenting to you tonight does have a rate increase for those tiers.
Okay. Is there an area where there isn't an increase? Or as I see it, it appears everything is going up in each tier?
Correct. And a good way to look at that would be the now, the user impact cases because I believe a user in each tier is presented there, so you could see the impact basically on each tier if you were to look at that.
Glenda, other question?
Yeah, that was my main one. I thought I had heard that there was no change in tiers one and two.
No change in the tier structure, yes.
Mr. Semino?
Does this, do these first two pages reflect the Route nine debt service? What line is that? Is that new debt service?
Yes, that's correct.
Are the FY 16 and 17, are those the only two years for that?
No, it's a 20-year.
Right? So, but we're only, we're talking about a 6.5% increase over two years and then we're gonna stop, is what I'm understanding.
We will have to re, sorry. We'll reassess in a couple of years. Most towns pretty much look at their rates every two or three years. We haven't looked at ours in five. So we just wanted, I was trying to just get the rates set so that we knew we wouldn't be in a deficit over the next few years, at which point, and we started this kinda early and it kinda gathering the data ended up, we thought we'd be closer into FY 15 when we started this. But once we have, normally, I think they normally would go out more to a five-year, but we were really looking at two years because what I find, what we found last time when we did this was putting in the tier rates this way. And the reason why we actually had to adjust the tiers is we've always tried to keep 10% of the people, the highest users, the highest 10% users, paying the highest rate. And what happens is for, at first, your consumption drops quite a bit because people don't wanna be up in the higher tier, which is why we tried to keep the lower tiers, you know, very close. So we'll need to reassess and see how we're actually doing with collections. We're, our town is, and actually the suburbs in general, are so weather-dependent on our usage and we lag a year. Our budget goes up based on the previous year's usage. So if we had a really dry year and we brought in a lot of money, the following year, we're paying MWRA for that water. And if it's a rainy year, our income isn't high. So we kinda seem to have this little lag with it, but they, that's one of the reasons that Abrams had to kinda like level it off for us.
If we wanted to though, we could, you know, I see in the second page where the cumulative surplus, you know, sort of stabilizes because of these increases. Does it continue to be stable in 18, 19, 20, 21, or do we assume that that, again, starts to go down?
We will be out of a few debts... We will be out of a few debts that we're in right now, at that point. But, we will start looking at, we're, we're gonna have a couple other big tickets start coming in, whether or not we end up with like another water tank or anything like that, some larger size improvements that are gonna come up. We might need to reassess just because of the new debt and capital.
These are all my questions.
Okay. Mrs. Faniff.
The new debt, Karen, in regards to Paul's question. Do you anticipate some large items? I mean, I know you mentioned a couple, but do you actually anticipate some large items to come before town meeting?
Yeah, our, our master plan, that we have the water system master plan, there, there's a couple of large pipe projects that still should be done within the next six, seven years. So, we're gonna want to get to those. And then, then we want to update our master plan based on all the improvements we've done to see, that was something that we had promised the neighborhood when we were looking at the tank originally.
So, when you say "large," can you put an estimate, a dollar value, just so that we have an idea of what you're talking about?
It's probably over all those years. This, the Route 9 is the biggest at 3 million, but I would say we're, over the next six years beyond that, we're probably looking at like five years, five, five years, 5 million.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
So, appears to be a pretty good study. This is something you do for a living. And probably what people listening at home might want to know is dollars. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if the, if you're the average residential user, your current bill using 2,873 gallons per quarter, your bill is gonna be about $97.50 currently. In, in, for, for next year fiscal 16, that's gonna go up to $101.57, an increase of $4.
Yes.
Okay. And then, beyond that, in 17, it'll go up to $103.91, another increase of $2.35. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Or, and, and nothing is greatly off from that in the, in the different tiers, correct? The, the similar percentages are gonna, if you're the average commercial at, with a two-inch meter at $292 a quarter, you're gonna go up to 309, an increase of $17, but the same percentage basically is, is what's happening with the residential, correct?
It's a little higher.
It's a little higher because of the proposed tier changes. That would impact the average commercial user, who is in tier four, I believe, as opposed to the average residential user who's in tier three. A little bit of a different impact, but not a much higher one. And just a quick note of clarification, when you mentioned 2,873, you mentioned gallons, it's actually measuring cubic feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, cubic feet. Which everyone can just hold in the hand, a cubic foot of water. But, I think that's good that you mention that. And if you don't have town water, ignore the presentation, because it doesn't affect you. We don't charge you to get water out of your well.
Still a good presentation.
Very good presentation.
I agree.
Yep. Thank you. Very good. And, and I'm kind of in agreement on, on the shorter look at for a couple of years till we see what's going on, rather than set the rate. I'd, I'd rather not set the rates five years out and then come back and reset them, you know, with the projects. Very good. Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Mrs. Azalbekian.
Desiree Azalbekian, 137 Woodland Road, Chairperson of the Public Works Planning Board. I just wanted to let the board know that our, our board, and Ms. Galligan, and the group had all met to review these rates. We were given four potential proposals. The third proposal, which is what you see tonight, is what was voted in agreement on four to one. The dissenting member, Mr. Jamie Helen, just wanted the board to know that he was not opposed to any increases. However, he would have chosen the fourth option, which was strictly a tier increase, as opposed to the meter and tier increase. He felt that that, during our discussions, he felt that that would better set up the town in the future for covering the projects, and it would also put a larger consumption and own, a larger onus of cost on the larger consumption users. He also felt that it would set us in place for a foreseeable future. So, he did want me to mention that tonight. Personally, as, as, from myself and all five members of the board, we want the selectmen to know that we think that the water, water reserves is extremely healthy amount compared to some of the surrounding towns. We feel that the town of Southborough is doing very well in having those reserves stuck at 1.5 million. It puts us in a very good position to do good projects going forward for help on infrastructure, and we commend the Water Department and Ms. Galligan for doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one more question, Mr. Boland.
Mr. Semino?
So, you know, to that point, and, and only if you can say fairly quickly off the top of your head, of the total increase that is represented by this scenario, what piece of that is in a, is, is a result of the effect of the rate increase versus the tier adjustments? How much of, how much of the increase sort of flows, no pun intended, from each of those adjustments? Can you sort of, if it's not something you have at the tip of your tongue, it's fine?
Not off the top of my head.
The, the thing with changing the tiers, which are just doing the tiers, which, what the, that scenario was like 20% of the people in each tier, it kind of punished the, the low users, because it actually pushed some of the lower users up a tier when they shouldn't have been, or when they wouldn't be now, and that was...
Yeah, fair enough, but, but the low users in this current scenario are gonna pay a higher rate, so they're, they're gonna be impacted one way or the other. I'm, I'm just trying.
They are, but they're not pushed into a different tier, which is the, the difference. Because they still ended up, their, their scenario ended up almost the, pretty much the same increase anyway, but it was, it was one of those things that they ended up, that 20% of the people were in that highest tier, and that was really, that's burdensome on people at that point. So, that was really where, and it looked like we weren't changing rates, but we really were by throwing people into new tiers.
So, essentially, these are, these are, I'm sorry, Mr. Semino, these are essentially conservation rates?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and one of the reasons I think that, and, and I appreciate Mr. Abrams' work, I've, I've worked with him in, in other communities, so this looks very familiar. Thank you. But, I think one of the reasons to look at this every couple of years, previously, I took a look at, at this every year, but I agree with the, every couple of years, because if you're putting conservation rates in place, people are gonna try to find ways to conserve water to bring their, to bring their cost of water down. So, therefore, you may have to, you know, make adjustments as you move forward, and people become more, you know, mindful of, of the water they're using.
Yeah, no, frankly, I, I agree with the dissenting vote, that the, the highest user should pay the highest rates.
Right.
I mean, they do now, but, but, but more of the burden should be shifted to them.
But with the, with the shifting from the 8,000 cubic to the 6,000, I think you've increased that number, you know, from, from 566 to 941 users, so...
I would support this, but I, but I would have rather seen that. Do you have something?
If you were to, well, I, I want to first comment on what you just said, and then I may have another comment for what you asked a second ago. About what you just said, if you take a look at the user impact cases for the scenario that we're presenting, and you look at the first year FY16, and you focus on the percentages, you will see that down towards the bottom, commercial users are, their, their bills will go up at a higher percentage.
Oh, I understand that. I was actually thinking more of a tier five residential versus a tier one residential. I think if you're in tier five, if you're residential tier five, you should carry more of a burden, vis a vis your other, your fellow residential users. I'm not trying to get into compares, comparing residential, commercial, for, for the purpose of my point, so...
Okay. And based on usage, there's about 400 more residential tier fives than there were under the old plan, from 566 up to 941, so...
Yeah, no, understood.
Yep.
And we, in our, in our last rates, we significantly increased the, the costs for our high users, correct?
Yes, because we had done rates in '07, and we had made them more even, and actually, at that point, someone looked at it from the town and said, "It's really not fair that the top 10% of the people are driving." So, that's why we've, we've been trying to keep 10% into that top tier. That was our goal.
To approve the requested water rates for FY15 and, oh, 16 and 17.
I would second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
The record show, Mrs. Faniff abstains.
For those that are unaware, I have a well, and five members of my family that reside in this town also have wells.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Is there any, thank you. Is there any public comment? We'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items. First one, I just wanted to, again, thank the board. We, we are now through town meeting. It's really gratifying seeing all the articles in the newspaper about all these towns, especially Framingham beginning town meeting, and they'll have their 10 to 12 sessions, and Hopkinton beginning their town meeting, and all of these issues that are out there. We have successfully completed ours already. And, you know, it was a, it was a six-month process. We begin in October trying to get ready for this, and, you know, we put together a, a budget and a warrant that I think town meeting, you know, acted upon. And, you know, we went in all in line, with the exception of $750 in the financial articles, and everything was, was passed. So, I appreciate, you know, this board, I appreciate what advisory did this year, and, you know, the residents that came out and, and participated in the discussion. But I also want to acknowledge again, there's a lot of work that went into this. The department heads the finance team, so it was, you know, a job well done by all. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly one more time. Secondly, and there's a couple of board members who may want to speak to this, the, the new owners of Southborough Volvo had, there was a ribbon cutting and a grand opening ceremony last Thursday that was very well attended by members of the community, town officials, Economic Development Commission, I don't know if Mr. Boland or Mr. Semino. Mr. Semino was the representative from the board who did the, the actual ribbon cutting, said some very nice words, and, and welcomed the business to town, essentially, I don't want to paraphrase, but that, you know, we can, you know, "Let us do what we can to help you, because your success, you know, makes all of us successful." And I thought it was a very nice sentiment to, to, to pass along. So, that was, that was one thing. And then the last thing I just want to mention, this Thursday, the, the town, our, our finance team is gonna be meeting with Standard and Poor's Rating Services for the bond issue, $3.6 million bond issue for the Route 9 water main project. We have not had a bond issue in about six years, and we have never, and I don't want to say never, but Mrs. Hale and Mr. Ballantyne have both been here, you know, Vanessa's been here, I think, 14, 15 years. They never recall Standard and Poor's actually ever coming out for an in-face meeting. A lot of these are done via conference calls, and they're fairly impersonal. And we have Standard and Poor's coming out to meet with us. So, we're gonna take the opportunity to meet with them, bring the, meet the finance team, and take them around town, show them a little bit about our town, some of the development going on, some of the industry, the commercial, and the potential that we have in Southborough. Currently, we have a double A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's. There's nowhere to go but triple A. And I, I think that we have a very nice story to tell. I have high aspirations, and, you know, we'll see how it goes. We should have a rating back, you know, within the next couple of weeks after the meeting, so maybe something to report on at the May 19th meeting. When we do get the rating back, Brian will, Ballantyne, the finance director, will come in and will give a present, a brief presentation as to what are, the results of the meeting were.
Has this town ever had a triple A rating?
I don't believe we have. And, and they, they don't, they don't give them out lightly. I believe Hopkinton has one. I think a lot of the, some of the W communities, you know, the Westons, you know, have them.
Do I infer from the way you said that, though, that you are anticipating, at, at a minimum, staying the same? There's no back, there's no...
I do not see, I, I would think that, you know, it was all but certain that we will end up with a double A-plus stable, which means that, yes, you, you are where you should be. However, I do think with some of the things that we've done in the past several years, we've stabilized a lot of our, our budget, we've got our one-time revenues being used on one-time expenditures, we've started to address our OPEB issues, we have, you know, a large, you know, unused levy capacity, it's over $2 million now. I think we've got a good story to tell, and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to having that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, it'd be, it'd be fantastic to go to triple A.
Yep.
And, and I, I hear you saying, "There's no chance we're going anywhere but there."
No, I, yeah, I, I, like I say...
Say where we are, but, but only going up before going anywhere.
We're either, we're either where we are, we're going up, and I think, you know, at least if, if, if we're not doing it this year, you know, we're gonna be going out for other bond issues. You know, the bo, the board and, and town meeting has authorized other debt that has not yet been issued. When that's issued, we'll have to go back and, and have our bond rating reviewed again. We'll continue to make improvements, and the longer, and the continued better track record that we have, I think only gives us a better chance of, of achieving that. And I think a community like Southborough, you know, should look to get to that level. You know, not everybody can get there, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be there. So, just wanted to make the board aware of that, and hopefully, we'll be able to report something back on the 19th.
So, I'll just share a little from our Metro West Regional Collaborative Executive Committee meeting, in, in which it's many of the local selectmen in, in the Metro West Regional Collaborative and planners, everyone is going into their town meetings. Wellesley had finished, they were happy, they finished in record time of, I believe, five days. So, it's, it's nice if, if we can get through in two. Most were impressed with us passing a demolition delay bylaw, which some have and some are trying to get. All were impressed that we maintained a budget which is $2 million below our levy capacity, because several of those communities are in fact looking at override potentials at, at their town meetings. So, they said that they thought we were doing a pretty good job on that. A lot of the towns similarly are going through road construction projects as, as we are. And we talked about greater information and cooperation between surrounding towns on letting each other know what's going on in their community, so if any of our residents are concerned and want to attend public information. So, we're really, I've been on the committee for quite a few years, and on the executive committee for quite a few years now, and we've been making some good progress as far as discussing municipal cooperation between all of the surrounding towns, and, and try to give each other a little more information. Holliston was, I worked with Holliston and gave them information to speak with Ms. Galligan relative to, they just went to a, successfully went to a DPW from where we were several years ago. So, at least with the people on the board now, there's, there's, there's a lot of increased cooperation, which is very encouraging to see, because we're, we're all in similar situations. That's what I have.
You know, there's some of the towns experiencing, you know, drop in numbers and participation at annual town meetings, or some, I think, have moved to the, we've talked about it here before, but a real remote participation. Did any of that come up in any of those discussions?
No, not really. Everyone kind of is of the same attitude that, you know, "How can we get more people to our town meeting?" But in the same respect, everyone is kind of, "Yeah, we've tried this, we've tried that," short of giving out money to everyone that comes. Some have tried the remote participation, I don't know if you saw the, I, I'm not sure if it was Whalen or which community, but there was an accusation of voter fraud at, at the meeting as, as people... as people were seen to have multiple of these voting devices in their seating area. The overall, what I see is that the people that have gone to it, for the most part, think it works well. I have mixed feelings because I've attended several meetings where you have these devices to vote, and the person doing that vote says, "Okay, well, there are nineteen people here, and I only have seventeen votes." So my concern at town meeting is, okay, we have two hundred of these devices out there, and we only have a hundred ninety-two votes. But I think anything we can do, everybody's looking at the same thing, how can we increase participation and...
And even, you know, being able to vote from home?
Yeah, and not many people, other than I think in Oregon, are keen on, in this area, are keen on voting from home unless the legislature decides that that's something they wanna put through.
I mean, I think town meeting is gonna continue to be issue-driven. You know, when you have a town meeting where everybody is all in lockstep and everyone agrees on everything, and some of the people that I talked to post-town meeting, if everyone agrees on everything, you know, then really, what's the need to come? I think if an issue such as the demolition delay bylaw, if everybody knew further ahead that it was going to go forward, I think you probably may have had a bigger crowd, you know, there than when they just, you know, deciding to go ahead the night of, so...
Well, there's a reason to come right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Town meeting is a funny animal, that, you know, with motions to reconsider and several other things that, you know, people have seen in the past, they voted for something, everyone leaves, and then there's a motion to reconsider and... Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda items. Does anyone have any issues with consent agenda items one through double-eight, it appears? So I'm gonna call the second, eight, nine.
I do not, other than abstaining on March twenty-fourth, but everything else is fine.
I have a question about number two.
Okay.
What is it we're being asked to?
What is, you know...
I can, I can let Ms. Galligan explain, but essentially, whenever there is a change to or an addendum to the collective bargaining agreement, this board needs to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for every union.
Fair enough, so it should say ratification of, that's all my, that's all my only point, I'm not trying to pick on it.
Sure, no, no, that's fine.
It's on the list, but it's not clear why, that's all.
Right, okay, so ratification of.
Then I'm fine.
Could I ask who signed it?
Who signed?
You can.
The agreement?
The council, the signatures.
For the union.
Right, it's not dated, that's why I'm asking.
No, for the union, it was, for the union, it was the Ask Me representative, it was the union president, and also the impacted employee.
Okay.
Other? Okay, then let's hold one, I'll move to approve consent agenda items two through nine.
Hold on three.
Okay, do you have, is it a question that we can answer, or you want to pull it out?
I'll just pull it out now.
Okay, two and four through nine.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda item one, minutes from March twenty-fourth, open session.
I'll make a... Nope.
Move to approve.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, Mr. Kalinda.
I'm sorry.
Minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, open and executive session.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, okay. Item three, appointment of row coordinator for Main Street project. Mrs. Faniff, you have a question?
Just a question, the Main Street, I understand that, you know, why Karen should be the individual appointed to this. Main Street Working Group, will they be updated on anything that might crop up that they might need to be made aware?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Move to approve consent agenda item three. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? On to other business properly before the board charged for permanent building committee.
All right, it's before us again. I did have an opportunity to speak with town council today, and what I would like to suggest to this board this evening that Mr. Purple, Mrs. Faniff, and maybe one other member of this board, sit down and have a dialogue on this proposal before it's advanced any further, and hopefully maybe with an advisory board member as well as what their expectation may be, so that we're not rehashing this again and again. And I asked to sit down with town council due to the fact that we had a warrant article before town meeting as far as membership, so clarity with this committee's status and appointments to this committee. A short delay.
Fine, may you?
Yeah, I'm fine with doing that. I think, like I said, I think it's important, when we originally, if you recall the discussion, we talked about public safety study.
Right.
And this permanent building committee on the same night, everybody thought they should be two separate things. Everybody thought it was a great idea for public safety, and, yeah, kind of, oh, by the way, yeah.
Well, I do.
Permanent committee, and we want them to work in tandem, well, now, public safety has started to move, and Mr. Hamilton is, wants to be aggressive about it.
But I also, I wrote this in January, and have not received any feedback from anyone, even if they...
Neither have I.
Even if they agree with it, disagree with it, where it may need changes, I mean, it's really premature to approve it.
Oh, no, and I'm not looking to approve it, the thought was this needs to get put back on the front burner so we can begin to move forward with this.
So could we circulate what I drafted?
Yep.
To the Public Safety Committee for input, because they would be reporting to this committee, if at all, if it goes that way, to the advisory board members, and feedback from the Board of Selectmen. I mean, this is a big undertaking, it's gonna evaluate all of our buildings, and where we're gonna plug in capital requests before town meeting and developing any plan. And if we're looking for success, we have to have a plan available to work off of.
Why don't you and Mrs. Faniff and Mr. Rooney has had some questions about it, why don't you get Mr. Rooney in with you and see if he had already had some concerns? I can tell you now, I don't agree with, from the beginning, identifying professions that should be on the committee.
Well, then you should've commented.
I did when it was originally proposed. All right. Move to adjourn and enter executive session. The board will be entering into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, and not returning to open session. Issue to be discussed is, one, to conduct contract negotiations with the town administrator exemption, two. Is there a second?
Before we do... I'm sorry, but before you take that vote, if Mr. Rooney would prefer an alternate member to stand in for the permanent building study committee, could we seek out another volunteer from this committee?
Sure.
Or have two?
Well, can't have, can't have two in addition to you, because then it's a majority of the board.
No, if one can't show up, the other will show up on that behalf. It's just to review this, it's not a, we're not doing anything other than to review something to present.
Right, but if you have three selectmen there, it's an open debate.
We know that.
You can take care of it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Boland, aye?
Do we?
Yeah, at this point.
That's part of the vote?
It wasn't.
We're expecting Mr. Rooney to join us for executive session.
Rooney will be called once we enter into executive session.
Should he not be called as part of the roll call vote to enter into it?
Not necessary, but we can.
Well, if you wanna do that, then we need to wait about another twelve minutes until he's available.
Yeah, I don't know why he has to...
Oh, I thought he was available at eight minutes.
I got a text from him saying that he was, he needed probably another fifteen minutes, so he'd be available by eight-twenty.
I thought that this board, the majority says we're going to executive session, we go.
Yeah, he can enter.
Okay. I just wanna raise the issue.
We have two ayes.
One aye.
Semino, aye?
Galligan, aye.
We are in executive session, thank you for coming.